And I would like to ask the town manager to re, please review the meeting protocols.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a reminder to everyone that this meeting is being reported, which you just heard. I am doing my best to identify people, but if you, if you're not showing up with your name, if you can please send me a message and I can correctly identify you for the record. We are going to have a brief council meeting beforehand, but the council work session is primarily for the council discussion. If you have any comments or anything that you'd like to add, feel free to use the chat button, which is allows you to send me a direct message. If for whatever reason this meeting gets interrupted, we will quickly end it and I will disseminate a new link for folks to rejoin at immediately afterwards. And with that, I will turn it back over to you.
And also, we would like to request that any resident or guest who is joining us on Zoom, that they please block their video. And with that, I will call the council meeting to order and I will ask for, we will go next to the consent agenda and I will ask for a motion to approve a consent agenda.
Move that we approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Councilor Barr. Is there a second?
Second.
I heard the president. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? All those opposed. Thank you. I think, I believe that was unanimous. And now I, and now I will ask the town attorney to please compose the motion so that the council can go into closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It'd be a motion to enter closed session pursuant to general provisions article section 3305B7 to consult with council on a legal matter, namely, legal advice related to the town's stormwater drainage ordinance.
I'll propose that motion.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion? So, council member, I mean, Mr. Town Attorney, it was also to with the possibility of discussing a legal matter with a nonprofit organization, if time allows.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Apologize for omitting that and to obtain legal advice related to the Bethesda Fire Department.
Okay, thank you. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor? All those opposed. Thank you. So, Mr. Town Manager will adjourn it and then we will go.
In German.
You're gonna let the people talk.
Okay, if you ever want to use this again, just say, be my German interpreter.
So you're, you're letting the people in, Mr. So we're reconvening the meeting.
I mean, German.
And
Sorry about my Google friend.
Alright, everyone, we're reconvening the town meeting, the town council meeting, and I need a motion to adjourn the council meeting.
I move we adjourn the council meeting.
Is there a second? I see Councilor Crumart. Is there discussion hearing? None. All those in favor? All those opposed. Thank you. And now I will convene the work session and turn it over to our distinguished council president.
Alright, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. We're a little behind schedule, but most worthwhile discussion. There's a, looking for Ron to give a brief update on hearing protocol and list serve participation. I think he discussed a little bit in the closed session, but Ron, do you have any further guidance to provide?
So, maybe this is an issue I should raise with council for the open meetings compliance board. I don't think it's an issue that's been expressly addressed by the open meetings compliance board yet. In the past, I've recommended the exercise of caution because we do know the open meetings compliance board has said an email discussion among a quorum constitutes a meeting. So, you know, I see that as akin to a list, list serve discussion. So, you know, a quorum of council members on a list serve discussing an item could constitute a quorum and violate the Open Meetings Act unless there had been notice in advance to the public in an opportunity to participate, which is problematic because not all interested parties may be members of that list serve.
So, one thing I want to say, one thing I want to say is that, you know, the last council in the recent councils, they are, I believe all the members made the personal decision to not use any private listservs so that they wouldn't get into the, the any kind of open meetings act violation issues. Now, now, the real challenge here is for individual council members to have an opportunity to communicate with their constituents. Right? And so, of course, given that there's this one listserv that happens to have a lot of town residents and, and we don't even know, you know, we have no control over it. It's, it's the convenient way, but what I would really suggest is that, is that if you, if you want to communicate with your constituents, find other tools to use, like develop your own list and communicate with that list directly. You can also, many other elected officials create their own Facebook pages. And, and, you know, there's, there's a world of technology out there to do that, but to, to to use that, you know, Sarah Morris's listserv, which seems to be the one that many, many residents use. You know, it's an easy thing to do, but it's gonna it's gonna get you into this, this gray area. And, and then discussion comes up about topics that need to be discussed at open meetings and what have you. So, so that's, that's all I, you know, we discussed this a little bit in the orientation and, you know, it's we're, you know, it's not up to me or Ron or anybody to, to, you know, chastise you. That's, that's not, you know, that's not our, you know, that's not our, we know, we're not the, we're not the, the police, but it's, it's more on the, on, on the just to warn you that, that you could be violating and, and you're, you could be found guilty. And so it's just to, to warn you, but, but the risk is up to, you know, it's your decision and the risk is up to you. I just feel it's our duty to advise you about it.
Yeah, I mean, other things I've mentioned in the past, because a private listserv is not an official means of communication. There's also a risk of incorrectly representing to folks that it is an official means of communication. And then if something, you know, slanderous is posted there, then someone may try and attribute the private listserv to the town. And, and also secondarily, if council members do participate on a private listserv, then there may be eventually an expectation from the public that you'll continue to do so. And, you know, instead of folks emailing you directly or showing up at council meetings, which you may or may not prefer.
So you're taking a lot of risks and it also then eventually conflicts with what is happening at the communications operation at the town hall. It creates a lot more work for us. So I just wanted to bring it up. I don't think it really requires a lot of debate or discussion. If you have questions, you know, Matt and I can, can talk to you about it individually, but, but I just wanted to bring it up again. Just as a warning, just as a warning, you know, a helpful warning.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Maybe, you know, we should talk about, not right now, but come up with a mechanism, like you suggested, that we can speak to, to our constituents. I don't like the Sarah was served. It's exclusionary. Not everybody's on it. It sends, it sends a bad message, I think, to use it as, in our, in our council member roles. But maybe we need to develop a way. So, you know, I want to sit down and talk to the town residents. I want to write them an email. Not like the ridiculous thing I did with this survey, you know, where I wrote to everybody, man, that was something I'll never do again. Do not worry. It took too much work. Um, but there should be something that would be easier for all of us to sit down and say, hey, I want to let you know this issue is upon us and this is what we're talking about. Maybe it's some sort of separate page that we have. I don't like the idea of Facebook, Jeffrey. Facebook is, is, I don't think that's where we should go.
That's, that's your, I'm just throwing it out there.
I'm just saying that there's something that we could do, that we could institutionalize as our way to have that public voice. Okay, that's
Okay, a couple of things. First of all, for my first year on council, I ran Zoom sessions for residents. Anybody could join as a way of talking to them. And they worked for a while, but then just participation fell off. And so I decided I was not getting through to anybody that way. And so, so that was it. But while I was working as a communications committee, I did recommend that with the new website, council members have their own pages on the website and pages can accept comments. And so that way there could be a forum for us individually, talking to council members. So hoping that happens.
That's one thing that I think can happen and probably will, but I think it needs to be almost something more immediate, that we want to send a word out to our constituents and you need a vehicle to do it that isn't the Sarah listserv.
It's through, you do it through Matt's blast at the end of the week at the moment. That's how you do it.
Yes, I do think the idea with the new website is that the opportunity for the staff to post almost immediately what happens at, at, at meetings and at, you know, committee meetings, whatever. And, and, and we ultimately will have to train our citizens to, to go to that, that source of information.
We do, like we do a town update. Could we have a more dedicated council update? Because there are a lot of things, you know, the legislative changes we've made, the processes we are doing on various aspects of our work.
Isn't all of this in the town journal?
I don't think it's widely read, unfortunately.
I know, but I mean, you can't really force them. Like, we can't, like, you know, hold a gun to their heads and say, read this, you know? I mean, if either people want to find, you know, find out what's going on in the town or they don't care.
No, it's just making it more convenient. That's all. Yeah, just to make it more convenient. You know, the journal is not convenient.
I mean, the journal, like, comes to their mailbox and they have to click a link, you know? It's, it's pretty convenient.
We are in an email world and in a texting world. We communicate differently these days. And so, just to keep that suggestion in front of you, if we can have a more direct council update, that might be helpful for us.
Okay, great discussion and I think that's a great idea, Kabir. I'd like to cut off this further discussion at this point and I'll make it a work session topic for the future. Because we're about one hour behind schedule at this point, like the third item in our agenda. And, and the main purpose of, of the item we just completed was just for the mayor and Ron to provide some guidance and insights in the proper use of some of the protocols. But you're absolutely right. That leaves, still leaves open the issue of how do we have effective communications? Okay, I can move on to the next general item, which is building height. This is really just to get the discussion started. We've, we've noticed that some houses have started to increase the, the visual height of the, the profile of Somerset considerably and have pushed up against the limit, the attachment that was provided. Explains how that limit works with the was it 35 foot height limit calculated in one of two different ways. The question is, do we want to, do we want to consider either reducing that height or removing some of the exceptions from the calculation of that height? So that height becomes a more firm limit. And I just, I just like to go around rapidly here and maybe get a sense of whether this is or not, this is a topic of interest to the council. And I see you there, Kabir. So what are your thoughts?
You know, I was surprised. I think we had a case recently, an application where they got a waiver, I think, on the height limit. And I was, I think it went to 43 feet, if I'm not mistaken. And so it was surprising to hear that, that that's possible and that it would, you know, sort of contribute to the massing element that we think about. I think I have a more general thought, Steve, which is that we, we've introduced a number of code changes, discussions on sort of how we are enforcing these changes and applying these changes. These are all live topics. And I am wondering if we need to pace ourselves a bit and so we can learn and, you know, just be more responsive, bring, bring the town staff along as well as we're implementing these. So it's just a more general point. But I share your view that that this is an area that we may want to look at. And I was surprised that one can get waivers or, or can have exceptions to the height rule.
Okay, thank you, Kabir. Debbie?
Um, I, I think it's something we should be looking at if we're, if we're, in terms of our code. And if a way to begin the conversation and maybe make, make an immediate change. Um, I like the idea of removing the exceptions, you know, like the, the house on Greystone. My understanding is that they could go as high as they did because the elevator was, that was, that was an exception. The elevator could make it higher. You know, I would like to look at those things to start and maybe we can take some of those exceptions away and that would be, that would be a good first step. But if we're not going to do that, I would like to see that thrown into a group of, let's look at the code, because I think these buildings are getting really high. So that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. Robin?
Yeah, two points. One is that there is a positive aspect to going up in height, which means that you're not increasing the impermeable surface on the property by going up in height, which we've got to remember. But the other thing is, again, it's with the house in Greystone, which is really the originator of this discussion. It would not look as bad if this house is next to it, were two stories, but the house is next to it or ranches. And so what I'm saying is that, um, I think doing something similar to what we do with setbacks, which is we look at what it is on the street, might well be applied to homes too, as a place to go.
Oh, interesting idea. I thought that. Thank you, Rob. Shannon?
Um, I agree with Kabir. Like, I think that, you know, the 43 foot variance that, you know, maybe Montgomery County gave, like, I would definitely not want to take any variances, but, um, you know, in the, in the time of, or in the priority scheme, it's, I don't know that this is a top priority as far as like limiting height right now. Outside of that.
Okay, um, thank you all. Great, great, great discussion, feedback. I think my takeaway is I'll put it on sort of the secondary priority list for the council. And maybe we'll take a look at it a few months down the road. Just discussed a bit further. Okay, thank you. Let's see. Next topic is voting age. So voting age has been raised by a couple of residents and we had the we, 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 we had a resident, a young resident speak at the last council meeting. So yes, the question, okay. So I just got a note from the mayor. So
To the, the question is whether, as you recall, this, to lower the voting age requires a charter amendment. So the question tonight is only, do, does the majority of the council want to request that the town attorney draft a charter amendment that would then be put on the agenda for introduction?
I'm good with it.
I also am good with it.
Me too.
If we're gonna have an official vote, you can put me down as a no. We can debate it.
But you're only voting, you're only
I know, I know we're only voting for, but, um, I, you know, I will speak differently when we
You have an, I know you, you're a true public servant with an open mind that will listen.
Absolutely. I'm a true, I'm a true public service servant with an open mind who worked with children. Okay?
Okay. There's an associated item on voting that's been raised. We haven't talked about before extending council eligibility to non-US citizens who are residents of the town. I just like to put it out there for folks to think about.
I think the question, I think
We have that already, Tony.
I think the issue was to ask the town attorney if the town has the authority to add that to the charter.
Is it even legal? Because can, can non-US citizens take the oath of office?
So, yeah, it's a question I need to research and it was something I was going to ask for clarification. Do you want to lower the voting age to 16 and also allow 16-year-olds to run for the council?
No, no, the 16 is separate. Yeah.
It's only, that, that's a separate issue.
It's a separate issue.
Locations are separate. The, the issue is lowering the voting age to 16.
The issue is
The next question that is being, that is being asked in a public meeting is whether the town has the authority to alter the charter to add a qualification for, for elected office as to add that you could be a non-resident.
Currently, in our charters, there's three, there's three criteria for, for being eligible for council. One is that you are a resident of Somerset for at least 18 months. The other is that you're a qualified voter in the town of Somerset. And the third is that you're a US citizen.
And, and there are residents, as all of you know, who've been here for, you know, 10, 20 years and are non-US citizens.
Right. So the question is, does the town have the authority to allow non-citizens?
Run for public office.
Run for public office.
For local, for our local position.
And, and do, do a majority of you wish the town attorney to find out the answers to that question?
Yes.
Yeah, I think that's okay.
I had a third issue, Steve.
Yes, term limits.
Yes, the other one, just to flag for everyone, is I don't believe we have term limits for council members and for any public office, I think, in town. I, I'm not 100% sure, but I don't believe we do. And I'm wondering whether we need to introduce them and establish term limits, whether that's another area that our town attorney could investigate what it would entail.
That would require a charter amendment. Yeah, I can answer that now.
The town has the authority to establish term limits.
Right. And there are none currently, as you noted.
Yeah, there are none currently. I don't know what's practiced in municipal government and in our area. Ron?
So I, I, it's not an issue I've researched. I can tell you off the top of my head. I don't believe any of my clients impose term limits. I think the town of Chevy Chase has a limit on who can serve as, as chair. There's supposed to be some cycling there.
I see.
It is an issue I'd have to research.
Well, I know the answer. There, there are no term limits in any municipal
I mean, I, I'll, let me double click on this a little more and I can come back to the council with more information.
Okay.
Well, you can get the answer to that from, you can call the Maryland Municipal League to get the answer.
That's what I was gonna recommend.
We pay a big fee to them and
16 grand a year. Yes.
And they've probably already researched it in the past.
I believe that.
Quick follow-up on this. Is this term limits just for, for council people like us or are we talking about committee chairs as well?
All, all positions, council, mayor, council, committee chairs.
I don't think we need a charter amendment to change, to put limits on committee chairs. I think it's, it's more council members.
That's a good point. That's a good point. That's, I suspect is up to the mayor.
Yeah, committee members serve at the pleasure of the council. So
Yeah, there, there's no term limit. There's no term limit for any of that.
Yeah, no, but That's a good question, Debbie. It's different. It's really, it's, it was also on our minds. Let me do a little bit more, adding a little bit more color to it and I can come back to the next council work session.
Okay, thank you, Kabir. The next topic is permit conditions. The example is what's the difference between conditional and permits and permits with conditions? And Shannon shared the example of a neighbor, right, Shannon, who built with a condition that they conducted some sort of study or survey, they got the results and they did nothing with it.
Yes.
And so
So, so basically Sorry. Well, no, I, I brought it up because I've been trying to follow up with building permits and the conditions that were given for the house next door to me and, um, nothing is set as far as any sort of follow-up for it. So for example, if we want this builder in one of our, I don't know if I can talk about it, but one of the builders somewhere said that they would be willing to put in a high caliber tree. And my recommendation would be that if that is going to be part of the building permit, that we get very specific and granular as to what kind of tree, who checks up on it, how do we know that it goes in, you know, all of those things? Because what I've found is there, with these conditional permits, there's a lot of getting around, um, you know, what the intent was for the actual permit.
Right.
Does this get covered in the building administrator's report? When we, when we get those updates?
No.
No, shouldn't it be? Matt, shouldn't it be in the building administrators' report? The conditions? Like if there are live conditions applied?
For example, like for my situation, next door, they said that part of the, you know, they were going to have to consult with a landscaping, a landscaping architect or, you know, something that specialized in water runoff. And to that was determined that they would put three trees in the back of the yard that don't have that much to do with the, the areas of issue. And they don't, they didn't plant any other rain gardens, nothing else. And that wasn't really the intent of the council. The council, in my opinion, the intent was that they would do more to help mitigate runoff and that's not the case.
Could we address this through an extended building administrator's report that covers live sort of conditional permits that have been given and the status of them, hopefully sort of with remarks from the code enforcement officer?
But I think it has to go through Ron first. Like, so, you know, when, when he writes his, um, you know, synopsis of we granted XYZ, we have to tell him, like, they promised to do X caliber tree, like, not just leave it to be like, oh, they promise, they promise that they'll do the one that's the most available. Like, that doesn't really mean anything. It's not sticky. So, you know, having like a specific, you know, thing in mind, if that's you know, thing in mind, if that's what we intend as far as approving this building permit.
I agree with that.
So it goes through Ron and then it can be checked through the building application, but it has to be first addressed through Ron's document.
Yeah, I think, I think the important thing to keep in mind is, sometimes the council may say, you know, we, we want you to consult with an expert. And, you know, we leave it to you and your expert to determine what's appropriate. Which is, for lack of a better term, somewhat, you know, wishy washy and, you know, you're, you're leaving that to the good faith of the applicant. If you want to impose an enforceable condition, that should be stated on the record. We want you to do A, B, and C, and that's a condition of your permit that is gonna be enforceable. And as you note, you know, we can have Doug Lowmeyer report on whether that condition has been satisfied. So yet, I think we just need, we probably just need to be clear in setting conditions. Whether it's, you know, something that's just you know, on good faith or something that's concrete that we expect to be implemented.
Yeah, but also whenever we say things like, you need to investigate this, or you need to get this, I think it would be good to kind of surface that at a council meeting in an update from the building administrator. So we have an ability to sort of keep an eye on these things, yeah.
But, but the, the problem with that is you are leaving the record and decision open. So.
No, no, I agree, I agree. But I'm saying in, in, in cases we've done that, let's say, it would still be useful to get an update from the building, because that would be our sort of official ability to weigh in on ongoing conditional permits.
Oh, yeah, maybe we're saying.
Right now, it's not visible to us, you know, was one tree planted or two was?
Sure.
We don't know. It would be nice to sort of see that.
Right, that's, that's easy. If you impose the condition that you plant two trees.
Yes.
That's easy to enforce. Either two trees have been planted or not. What's, what's more difficult is if you say, we want you to speak with a landscape architect and discuss what plantings may be water absorbing to help address this issue. You know, that, that's rather unenforceable. Because there, there's no concrete requirement. So that, you're just leaving to the applicant's good faith. If you wanted the applicant to come back and say, here's what I found, here are the plans I propose. You know, then you'd essentially be leaving the record open and you would not be able to grant the permit until you have that.
I see.
Yeah, I, I, I've been toying around with that myself in fact, and one thing we could do, and I'm still playing around with the idea, it's not fully formed, is require them to come in with a landscape architect when they're applying for a variance. So that you hear from the landscape architect everything that's been done in order to, in this case, manage stormwater.
I say, I like the idea of a landscape architect. Yes, are there any other comments on this or should we move on to? Well, I guess, sorry to preface up, did, Debbie, did you have any comments on?
No.
Okay. So I think this is something we just need to pay more attention to as we move forward in the guidance we give Ron. And we would ask our town council to question us. Exactly, e- e- even in the course of the meeting to say, is, is this specific enough? Is this your intention?
Gotcha, okay.
And and perhaps as a separate action item, we can explore expanding the building report to include compliance with any conditions, just so we can clearly follow up. But I'll, I'll leave that as an action item for me to discuss with the town manager. Okay, I think the next topic is the Bethesda Fire Department. Shannon, can you lead this?
Yep, so, um, we have, obviously you guys know that we've done a lot of looking into the Bethesda Fire Department. We had the forum with Chief Bailey and Chief Ash, and so this is just kind of follow up items that have come from that. So the Public Safety Committee has recommended that we approve a job description or a position description for our liaison to the Bethesda Fire Department. So we currently have a liaison between the Bethesda Fire Department and our town. But what, and this is also kind of as a prelude into a lot of these town positions where people serve on behalf of the town for. So I'm just setting up some guidelines as far as like, how do we want that person to report back the information to us? You know, do we want them to, after meetings, to give us some information? Like, you know, how do we expect that someone within that position should keep the town kind of informed of that? So the Public Safety Committee has gone through and written up a description for this representative, and that is what is in front of everyone right now.
So I, I just wanted to add, I, I just wanted to add something. So I, I want to applaud the committee for their work on this topic and I tonight, I've been putting off for a number of months a discussion about some guidelines for all of our residents who serve on outside organizations and committees and what have you. And we're not gonna, unfortunately, we're not gonna have time to get to it tonight. But, but I want, what I wanted to say on, on this item is that I, I support in moving forward. But I wanted to inform you that the, the bylaw, unbeknownst to us, the bylaws of the Bethesda Fire Department, which is a separate nonprofit. The bylaws were changed in 2020. Previously, the, there was a provision in the bylaws that each municipality within the Bethesda Fire Department Service Area had the ability to nominate a, a member of the board. The, the bylaws were, were, are, are very, were very vague. They, the new bylaws are even vaguer, but in any case, that's for another day. But I, but what I wanted to say is that the, so the, the person that we have, which is a former councillor Barbara Condos. At the time that she was, that she joined that board, it's when the the bylaws said that that our municipality had the ability to nominate a member of the board. And so we went through a process where I nominated her and the council approved, and then it was sent over. Now, the bylaws were apparently changed in 2020. We didn't know anything about it. And, and I'm not sure if procedures were followed properly, because we haven't seen minutes. I, this is something for a future discussion. But in any case, the current bylaws do not call for a municipality to have a a member. So, so until we get that clarified, I think there's a lot of legal questions here. But I, it, but in order, I, I don't want progress to stop, so, so I would support moving forward with this recommendation with the caveat that we need to get some legal questions answered. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In the interest of time, I'll just say, are there any questions or comments that folks have?
I, I mean, I, I had a number of comments that I was still thinking about. I mean, like, the requirement is the representative be at least age eighteen in our document, but it's twenty-one in the Bethesda Fire Department standards. And what do we want to do under those circumstances? And the other thing is that the reporting to the council is, I think, once a month in, in, in here. And we were setting that, nobody else has anything like that in terms of reporting. So it may be justified, but I'd want to know more about that. And in other words, I'm, there's some questions.
Mayor Slaven. Mayor Slaven, would it be possible to go one click up and come up with the broader guidelines first that apply to all of these entities? You know, I think that was our original intent, right? Like, to sort of a, a higher level guidelines across all of these entities and then specifically in each case, what our expectations are.
All I was gonna say tonight about that, and, and I think at the interest of time, this, the, the, the agenda item that I had requested for this meeting is not, is not urgent. So, so.
Okay, maybe we do a part two.
Cause I know there's other priority matters, but.
Well, and also, and also, you know, we have to be, we have to also go through like the Bethesda Fire Department's bylaws. So, you know, to your point, Robin, where they say twenty-one. You know, we can't have our own bylaws, you know, generically, and that then don't match up with like what each of these organizations' rules and bylaws are, I don't think.
Yeah, okay.
So should we do a part two next work session on this?
Yes. I, I do think it's, I, I agree that's important to, for us to establish some sort of expectations or guidelines for our representatives to these different bodies on, on their communications back to us. Great, next item, also Shannon.
So that is a recommend that the committee hold a public forum with the second district manager, police manager. So obviously, safety has been a big priority in the Public Safety Committee. And, and so Kumar has done excellent job of, um, he is meeting with, I think, the second district police manager and has gotten a lot of great information from her. And we were just hoping that we would have the committee go to set up a public forum so that if people, she can speak, just much like the fire department one. Where people can speak if they want, but it's not gonna be hosted by the town council, it'll be hosted by the committee.
The, the idea tonight was just to put the council on notice that the committee is gonna be having this, this hearing. And, and unless there's any violent objection by any council member, the committees have the ability to have their own meetings and hearings. But we, because it was such an important topic, I thought it was a good idea to run it by everybody, just so they know.
Yep. I think it's a great idea. Any comments from any other council members?
And then, um, one other thing on that, on the same guideline, so the committee on we are also working on following up with Chief Ash, who is the local Bethesda Fire Department chief. Because he invited some more communication between us in the hearing that we had. And so we're gonna follow up, you know, and with him and, and develop more of a relationship there. And then, um, the committee is also working on a letter that follows up from that same hearing with Chief Goldstein.
Right, that was a good hearing. Okay. Great, thanks again. Next item is town apiary. On the run, if you want to just do a brief summary?
Yeah, I'll try to do background and then a brief summary.
Wait, no, wait a minute. This is supposed to be Matt giving an update.
All right, you, you mentioned that it's, this, the bottom line is want to get ready to make a vote next in, at our next council meeting.
No, no, we, we, we want, okay, we want Matt to present what's going on here so that then the council can decide in which direction to go.
Okay, that sounds good.
Not, it's not, it, it's, it's the processing of the recommendation from the committee. So, because there's further information that is needed from Matt before to the council can consider it.
And there's a lot of history on this one. Thank you for volunteering, Matt.
Sure, so I'll, I'll, I'll keep it brief so we can move, move along. But in essence, if you recall, last year, around this time last year, the environment committee had recommended that the town approve of an agreement with a private beekeeper to hold bees in, on Somerset property. And the council approved of entering into an agreement with, with this particular beekeeper. She ended up not agreeing to terms with, with the town. And the committee is recommending that the council approve of a new agreement with another beekeeper that they have found.
No, but wait a minute, wait a minute. The, the council approved the contract with the beekeeper, with, with the Sarah Keel.
Right.
The negotiations fell apart and that contract is no longer, you know, that's the end of it. In the meantime, the council has passed a procurement policy. So could you please elaborate on the impact of that policy?
Yeah, so last and correct, correct me if I'm wrong or have any facts that need to be corrected, but last year, the committee did it, did research on possible beekeepers in the area that might be interested. They did not, we didn't go do a formal bid process for it. And so similarly, this year, they, they are, they're, they just have recommended one of the other beekeepers that they had spoken with last year.
Right. So clarify that, there's no.
So the, the issue is whether, the, the issue, so, so Matt, just like with the website, can you please talk about the, the, that provision in the procurement policy that allows the council to decide whether they're going to?
Yeah, yeah, so, so as you recall, we, the council passed a procurement policy in February and updated it just last week. It's hard, hard to believe that it was only one week ago that we met. But that is, that requires that all, all work for services in a sum exceeding fifteen thousand dollars should be bid out in a specific way and on specific platforms. I think for a couple of reasons, the committee is asking that we forego a formal bidding process. One is, as Steve just referenced, that the, the services themselves will not cost more than fifteen thousand dollars. And I, I believe in informal talks, they, they said that the beekeeper would provide the services for free. And then second, as the mayor was mentioning, there are exceptions as well to the requirements, including instances where the gov- the government has recently undertaken a competitive bidding process. So I, I think under given that the, the fees for this service would be under fifteen thousand dollars and the belief by the committee that they have exhausted all. Exhausted, uh, a- all, um, all possible. Uh. Beekeepers in the area who, who would be interested, uh, they are, they are requesting that we forego.
But my point is that in terms, you know, you created and approved this beautiful procurement policy. It, it is not up to a committee to do the procurement. You also had a procurement policy that was reviewed by the Equity and Inclusion Committee. And so I, I, I think you need to consider the fact that now you are basically. Granting a sole source contract to, to another. Non, you know, um. You, you have not given the opportunity for non-white. Beekeepers to even know about this. And, and it's, and, and as you know, we don't, we don't expect our committees to do. Staff work of, of procurement. And, and I think that, that given that, that I think it was the. The motivation of the council in passing the procurement policy that we make it a professional one, rather than just handing out. Self-source contracts to people. I think, I just don't think it looks good, but it's up to all of you to decide. That's, that's all I'm saying.
I share your view, Jeffrey.
Don't we, don't we want to discuss first whether? We want to do this. I know we just, we, we had something for last, last year, but maybe our, our minds have changed. You know, maybe we don't want to spend money on this. So.
It was a different council, correct?
What? Could, could, could I say something, Jeffrey? This is not a procurement. We're getting this service free. Um, we're not spending money. Um.
That's still a procurement and we, and money has been spent on that project.
It, we spent money previously, this is true. Yeah. But. That doesn't affect what's happening now, and there is no money being spent. Now, I mean, the policy itself also says that when the funds spent are under fifteen thousand dollars, then. Policy doesn't, that doesn't apply. Um, as far as I know, they did due diligence on all beekeepers. They did not approach only, um. Anglo-Saxon beekeepers, um, and what they've got, and Elizabeth Harris, I don't know what.
The committee cannot do that. We, we have to run the process.
It's true, um. When there is a. Money being spent, yeah.
Well, it's a zero cost contract, but we are still, uh, acquiring these services and it's a pretty. You know, it, it, I would think it would still fall under the umbrella of procurement process. But, but open to what others think.
I mean, Debbie has also brought up the issue of do we still want bees? And I think probably that, that is, needs debate too, if one of the council members is uneasy about that.
Well, I, I just don't think. You know, I think it's something we need to talk about. You know, just because the last council approved it and it never, and, and it didn't happen, maybe we just need to talk about it. Uh, that's all. That's my, that's my, my two cents.
As the only sole vote against it, I would be totally open for it.
You voted against it?
If I remember correctly, I think I was the only one against it at that time.
Um, do we have? Uh, but like, it, does this cost us money as a town?
No.
And, um, but like with the procurement policy, I mean, don't, didn't we just put that in? Like, don't we have to kind of follow what we say?
I, I think we are following what we say in our procurement policy, actually, yes.
Did we get like, um, how many proposals are we supposed to get?
It doesn't, it, we don't specify a certain amount of proposals need to be received.
You, you, when you say it's, we're getting it for free, what about the insurance?
At the, the beekeeper is the one who gets insured.
And we don't care.
We have insurance already.
Okay. Does the. The, the last beekeeper, uh. We, the negotiations fell down and we were going to have to pay for her insurance.
I, I think that I, I, I have to read again, but I'm pretty sure it says in the recommendation from the council, uh, from the committee is that, uh, Elizabeth Harris has accepted the insurance.
I was not around, um, for the bee conversation. Um, it was before my time on the council, but I have heard. From my constituents, a lot of people that weren't happy about the bee conversation. So. Or the bee decision. So maybe it is something that we need to revisit.
It, I mean, obviously if you go, there are some council members who think that way, then we should revisit it with a new council, yes. Um. Interesting discussion, I mean, very discussion, um, sharing viewpoints. I, I think my takeaway is that. There is, there's interest in proceeding with a, the apiary. There's also interest in a discussion and the interest in proceeding with the apiary is not necessarily unanimous. And there's also the question of use of.
The decision is just whether you want to put this on the next agenda.
Right.
It's not going to decide whether or not to do it.
I think we should put it on the agenda, makes it open for the, for residents to speak about it again. There is some urgency in the timeline because bees can only, or can be best be moved or relocated at certain times of the year. So I think that if we wish to proceed this calendar year. We would need to have a positive vote in April, but I'm not pos- I'm not a hundred percent certain on that. Anyhow, we'll put it on the agenda.
Steve, I'm not confident if you should put it on the agenda. I think this requires. Another discussion, given comments made by fellow council members. I don't, I don't think we are, we need to look at this again. And it's okay, let's do it properly. Again, I feel we are kind of, you know.
Okay.
The end are trying to make it happen. Let's just look at this properly. Let's take a step back, follow up procurement process. If we all feel confident, we need to move forward. And that's that.
Okay, I, is not unreasonable to, to, to folks concur?
I don't see why we can't have it on the agenda next time and talk about it. I think, um, you know, I think we're going to run out of bee season if we do that, number one. And number two, we've talked about it tonight, so why not put it on the agenda?
Wait a minute, last year, last year, the Sarah Keel. Was planning to move the bees in the, in the fall. So I don't think you have enough information to come to that conclusion.
All right.
She, she, Jeffrey, she originally wanted to move them in May because that's the best.
I, I know, but she. I don't think, I mean, honestly, la- last year, that created. A lot of controversy. It was a lot of work and it failed. And I, I don't, it doesn't seem to me that this has been. Researched enough to the point to put it on an agenda. That's all, that's all I'm saying. Plus, I, I, I think that. Given that you've passed a, just like I said before, you passed a procurement policy and. With the mission of, of opening up the possibilities for people to get contracts, there, there is, there, there is an advi-. There, there's a reason why someone wants to, to, um, contract with the town, even if it is free. Supposedly.
Steve, let's do this properly. You know, we're not closing the book on it. Let's follow the process and we may come out with an outcome that is actually stronger.
Okay, so I'll. I'll put it on the work session for next month and we'll give it more time so we can have a thorough discussion. Decide on the use of the procurement policy. And then I guess the best case, if we decide to go forward, would be a vote in May. Early May. Um. I'm not entirely happy because I, I, I feel like this is a topic that we've already, that the council has already discussed and reviewed. So it's like, we're, we'll be rehashing, but. But we should, but we have new members and we should proceed thoughtfully. So that's how we'll go. Uh, ti- with time short, I'm going to, um, skip past pickleball and committee appointments to outside organizations. Uh, thank you, Miss, Mr. Mayor. And we'll just ask for a website update for Matt.
Yeah, thanks. Um, so. The. The bottom line is that, um. I met with, with Jeffrey and, and Barbara Marinus, the, the communications chair today and, uh. I'm actually going to recommend that we terminate our current contract with Jesse James Creative. Um. I haven't. Received an update from them in over a month and, um, the last time that they. Sent me the homepage, we had given them, uh, some, some feedback for, for changes and, um. I was told that we would meet. Within a week and I, I never heard anything back. Um, yeah, I, I wanted to give them the benefit of the doubt, um, because COVID, um. I- in particular, uh, so I, I, I understand having staffing shortages and. And all that, um, but. Um, my aim was after, after Christmas time especially to really. Ramp up this project and to set clear deadlines so that it's moving forward. And, and unfortunately that. That just hasn't happened. And so, um, I, I am consulting with Ron about, um. Whether we can or whether it matters if we're terminating for convenience or for cause. Um.
Well, well, that's, that, that's, okay, I, I think that the town manager has. The ability to terminate the contract. And so, um. The, isn't that correct, Mr. Town Attorney?
I need to look at the actual contract. My, my typical contract template allows termination for convenience, generally within five days' notice.
But by the town manager, correct?
Correct, by the town.
Okay. So, so I think it would be good if, um, Matt saw that advice. And then the next issue is, in the interest of time.
Yep.
So the next issue that Matt wanted to present to the council. And which, and, and this, you know, the, the communications chair and. And I have been working with assisting Matt as he implements the contract. And it is her request, and I agree with it, that we short-circuit this. So that we, this is similar to the, uh, process for the, for the apiary, by the way, that we short-circuit this. In order to, because, you know, what long are we due to get this new website? So, Mr. Town Manager, can you explain how that would work? And what the requests is of the council tonight?
Yeah.
Very quickly, how much have we already spent on this contract?
About five thousand dollars.
Okay, okay, good.
Um. So. Uh, yeah, after talking with the chair, she, she would like to just move ahead with the. What, who is basically their runner-up, which was Revise, um, which. Incidentally, is actually a, a minority owned business, um. Was. Uh, actually a more affordable, uh, a less expensive proposal in the first place. And I actually. Um, also happen to have firsthand experience with them because they redesigned the. Martin's Editions website when I was working over there. Um, so the, so the, the question for the council is. Um, if you would approve. Moving forward with revise with the, or if. Or if alternatively, we should go back to the drawing board, rebid it out and.
And explain, and explain what provision of the new procurement policy allows you. To ask the council whether you can fast track this to put it at, at the next meeting.
Right, yeah. Uh, a- as, as I had mentioned during the apiary. The exceptions that we built into the procurement policy, one of, one of them was with, it was if the government had recently under. Undertaken a, um, a competitive bidding search. Um. And so I, we, we did get a pretty good response when we put it, put it out to bid, um. Last year, last, uh, last May and, um. So I, I would be comfortable moving forward with revise, but, um, did want to get the council feedback on if you felt comfortable. Using that exception or if you would feel more comfortable, um, going out to bid again.
Before we go there, have you communicated to Jesse James at all your intent to, um. Cancel the contract? Yet.
No, because he has to get the, he, he has to, he has to get the advice from the town attorney.
Not yet, bec- uh, uh, yeah. And in part because I, I wanted to, I wanted to fill you all in on my thinking.
Yeah, I mean, what I'm asking is whether if they're under threat with termination of the contract, if we're going to see a different performance from.
It's possible.
Well, that's good input. That, that's up to you. You. So, so the decision now is whether you want to. Agendize another contractor that it would be conditioned on, on the. Town attorney's advice to the town manager, or do you wish to? Ask the town manager. And something else of the current contractor, or do you want to go out to bid again?
I think Debbie had a point.
Can I say something? I think it's really important to the Communications Committee at this point that this move fast. They are frustrated. They've worked hard. They feel like they have egg on their face. Because of all the work they've done, reaching out to committees and getting their input. And they feel very marginalized. And I think it is, uh, important for us to fast track this. And, um. So I'd like, I'd really like to put a vote in for that. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, it, it only takes a quick call presumably to Jesse James saying that we intend to terminate the contract. Um, unless we get products from you within a week. Um. That's not going to delay things particularly. I mean, I, I think, I think that there is a reason, there was a reason why we went for Jesse James originally, um. And if in fact they can be turned around by this threat, then fair enough. But if they can't, then by all means, yes, we should go to the next one on the list.
I don't think we should waste our time. I think Jesse James has shown, has shown, has shown what he can and can't do. And at this point, we need to move and, uh, just delaying.
They haven't been put under threat yet. They have not been put under threat yet.
It doesn't matter. We shouldn't be in the position of threatening our contractors. Our contractors, it's their job or they don't. And if they don't, they need to go. And they have really dragged their feet and not followed through. Maybe they have too much work. I have no idea. Maybe they don't have enough staff. It's not my problem. And I just think the committee would really like us to move forward.
I share Debbie's view on this. I mean, this is not complicated stuff. Folks, like this, I mean, the fact that they haven't delivered on this is a major red flag. And they capacity to do anything, frankly. I mean, this is easy stuff. It's commoditized service, it's widely available. So I think that, I mean, as long, my only concern was that we, we should stick with our procurement policy. That's the whole idea. But if it, if our action here. Is consistent with the policy, then I'm comfortable going to the. Runner-up of our previous process. I just want to caution you, Matt, that they, they probably will not, they probably will not charge. Not likely to charge the same.
Right, yes, yes. I, I, yeah, fair, fair point.
They might charge less, there's probably less work to do on it. We'll see.
I think all labor costs have gone up, so I'm, I would be surprised.
Okay. So. Uh, the, the consensus I'm hearing, um, well, first, Shannon, did you have any comments?
No.
Okay, um, the consensus I heard is to, to give Matt the authority. Okay, um, the consensus I heard is to to give Matt the authority to work with the town attorney or to ask the town attorney to work with the town manager, give the town manager the authority uh, as appropriate to uh, terminate the pro, the uh, contr, existing contract. Um, I think you can, I I wouldn't trust Matt to use his good judgment and if, if Jesse James appears responsive at that time, I I wouldn't trust Matt to um, to stay with Jesse James, but also just to move over to the other vendor.
Well, Matt has.
Does that summarize things?
Matt has the authority to terminate the contract, I believe. But the issue tonight is whether you want to, if if all that's the case, if it's all right to agendize the other contract for the next meeting.
I think so, if it's consistent with our procurement policy, which it sounds like it is.
I would like Matt in the interim to threaten Jesse James with the fact that it is on the agenda for our next meeting to find out if that changes their performance.
I don't want you to threaten him. I think it's a waste of time. I think.
We, you can recommend, you can recommend whatever you want, but this is Matt's job and.
Okay.
Well, I think we just have to follow the.
The contract does allow termination in five days.
Sorry, I couldn't hear Ron or.
I apologize for speaking over, council member. Uh, Matt sent me the contract. It does allow the town to terminate for convenience within five days' notice.
Great. Shannon, what were you saying?
I was just going to say, I think that threatening or not threatening, we just have to make sure that we follow the proper steps to get out of the contract.
Right, yeah, so we give him five days' notice.
I have complete confidence in the town manager to hand, you know, the council gave him the authority to administer the contract, which includes the decision on termination.
Yep, concur.
Well, gi- given our earlier conversation that we need better communication platforms pronto, I think we we should move quickly on this one. And I I mean, I would be supportive of putting this on the agenda consistently.
I mean, and and one, one thing to consider, and I'm sure Matt already has, is often website designers will assert some intellectual property rights in the the design or whatnot, and it can be difficult to transfer services. You know, sometimes the new provider might have to start from scratch if the, if it's.
Well, that's, that, that is honestly part of the reason why I'm ready to pull the plug at this point because they haven't even gotten to the point where they've started transferring our data over. And so our data is still on our existing website. And so that's not even, that's, that's, that's the benefit, I suppose, of them not having done.
These new wireframes, this, this new wire for the new site.
Um, yes.
So that would be subject to what Ron was just saying. Just so you know.
Okay, I would suggest in the interest of time, I'm trying to help our president, that if you
I'm fading.
Individual advice to the town manager, he would welcome it. But I I don't think this requires a joint discussion.
Concur, okay. Thank you all for hanging in there. We covered a lot of ground this evening. And we have another meeting this week, another budget hearing. With that, unless anybody has any closing thoughts or comments, I'll draw us to a close, just about ten minutes late. Okay, have a good evening. Thank you all.
Bye.